Good afternoon, everyone. I would like to welcome all members and guests to the April 1st, 2025 Public Hearing Committee Meeting. And remind everyone, our meetings are web streamed and televised, so if you could please ensure your devices are muted, that would be appreciated. I now call the April 1st, 2025 Public Hearing Committee Meeting to order. All members of council are present, or committee are present today. Are there any declarations of pecuniary interest? With that, I will... Look for a mover and a seconder, please, to approve the agenda. Moved by Counselor Van Adrishe, seconded by Counselor Columbus. All in favor? That's carried, thank you. I now officially open the public meeting held under the Municipal Act, the Planning Act, and Norfolk County policy. Please be advised that under the Ontario Planning Act as amended by the province, only specified persons and public bodies, as defined in the Planning Act, may appeal a decision of Norfolk County to the Ontario Land Tribunal. Third parties or anyone who is not a specified person or public body do not have the right to appeal a decision to the Ontario Land Tribunal. However, to preserve the ability to be party to any appeal to the Ontario Land Tribunal, third parties or general members of the public are required to make or provide written submissions or comments. These meetings are being hosted to allow oral and written comments as input to the decisions on specific development applications. And today we have item 4.1 on the agenda, which is Report CD 25045 Dover Mills. Over to staff, please.
Thank you, Mayor Martin. Through the chair to mayor and council, this is a report and a proposed red line amendment to the 81, the property at 81 Dover Mills Road. Okay, could we have the next slide, please? Site characteristics, the total land area is approximately 22 hectares or 55 acres. It is located on Dover Mills Road, and the subject land is currently vacant. Surrounding land uses are predominantly residential, agricultural, and open space. Next, please. Here's some site context. There's an official plan map that shows what the official plan designation is and proposed on the other one is a proposed zoning bylaw and bylaw amendment map that can tell you what the surrounding uses are and everything like that. Next, please. Next is a phased development concept plan that shows the phases of development for the proposed subdivision. Next, please. Next is what we have. The proposal for the rezoning is to rezone the three lots in pink there to green, which would be from residential, urban residential 1B to open space with a hold provision on them. Next, please. And then this slide is the proposed red line adjustment for, just to bring some lots into consideration and for the stormwater area. And it is, last slide, please. It is recommended that Report CD 2545 for development applications to PTL 2024-462 and ZNPL 2024-48 be revised, sorry, be received for information and that the committee recommends that the proposed amendment to bylaw 1Z 2014 be approved. Thank you.
Thanks for your presentation. Are there any questions of committee through to staff? Okay, we have one registered deputation. Mr. Bunting is here.
Madam Mayor, through you to council. My name is Sam Bunting. I'm here with Prominent Homes on behalf of Prominent Homes. We were fortunate enough to buy these lands recently from the Egg Inc. family, who started this development approximately eight years ago. My ask today is to keep the lands that is designated in the current zoning as residential. I would like the opportunity to develop four lots on this land and be able to provide Prominent Homes the benefit of building on these lots and provide Norfolk County with additional taxpayers' money. So I've provided some paperwork that I hope you all could look at today. The first page, I've outlined the four lots. They're highlighted in red, and each lot is circled, 1, 2, 3, 4. There is an orange highlighted area. This orange highlighted area is an archaeological site that is being preserved, and our hope and expectation is that this will be turned into a parkland area. And then the yellow highlighted areas there are areas where parking would be accessible for the community to park and access this orange highlighted area. There would be approximately room for about 30 vehicles to park in this yellow highlighted area, and the orange area represents about 4% to 5% of the development meeting the necessary parkland development area requirement. I had the opportunity to meet with Norfolk County staff this week and have a discussion with them around why they wanted to specifically zone this four lot area from residential to open space and prevent future development. And their response to me was that this was a decision made seven years ago, and that is what they would like to see happen, and they would like to have an open space that would be accessible for the park. They felt that this park would be valuable addition to the surrounding developments. And I don't feel that's enough justification to prevent taxpayers' money or Norfolk County Council to gain taxpayers' funds from these four lots. The first reason being, there's no sidewalks from those other developments that can access this development. They would be walking across busy roads and highways and walking along the roads to access this development. So I don't think that that was considered. So essentially, the surrounding neighborhoods will not walk there, they'll drive there. Well, if we look at page three of my documents, you can see our development highlighted at the top there in red. And I've highlighted other community parks that are actually quite local to this development. There's the Sunning Hill Drive Park on the far right-hand side. It's 1.7 kilometers, 3 minutes from our development, and it's a large green space that would provide the exact same amenity. There is the park on the far left, St. Cecilia's Park, where the public school is. It has a very good playground, it has soccer fields, and it's accessible to the public after school hours. That's a very good park for the community to use. There's the Port Dover Arena, there's open space there, 2 kilometers and 3 minutes from our development. And there's the Silver Lake Park, 2 kilometers, 4 minutes from our park. So the point I'm making is that there's actually better park opportunities for the surrounding developments to access rather than coming through our development.
Just about 30 seconds left.
Okay. So if I go back to my second page of my documents, you'd be able to see that there is a stormwater retention pond, highlighted in the blue. There is going to be a fence that's required around that storm pond, and I've highlighted in yellow the opportunity to build a walking path around this pond that would allow residents to access this parkland in behind. And it would be very clear for anyone driving into the subdivision, I'm proposing that we build a sign that states there's a park, and you would very clearly see through the pond to the parkland in behind. It'd be very accessible for the community in this land retained. So I don't feel that we should be using valuable development land to just provide open space. That seems very redundant in this case.
I'm gonna have to cut you off there, but we'll open it up to questions.
Thank you.
Thanks. Are there any questions for the deputation? Counselor Brennan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, for, I guess, my question to Sam, is it?
Yes.
Thanks for coming, Sam, but just...
Thank you.
The stormwater pond was designed by your consultant, I take, and is it a detention or a retention?
It is a retention pond.
Retention.
Yes. So it's going to collect storm water when there is a significant storm event, 100-year storm. And the waters from our development and even surrounding lands collect to this pond, and it would store it for, you know, a certain number of hours and then discharge it to the creek running behind the development.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Van Adrishe.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and through you. So this development was designed approximately seven years ago, basically, but that particular block B was left out. It was left out for a green space at that particular time?
At that time, it was actually left as residential, and staff is now, the purpose of this zoning amendment is to change this land from residential to open space, and they want to put a holding provision on so that it cannot be changed back to residential.
And you're here because you want to see that that particular space, 1, 2, 3, 4, is open up for lots so that you can develop there?
Correct.
As well as what, and you feel that the parkland that's around it is sufficient enough?
Correct.
And of course, seven years ago, we weren't under the housing stress that we are now, so it makes sense. Anything else you'd like to tell us?
I think you've hit the nail on the head, really. I think there is a significant more demand for housing now, and I think there's more demand on Norfolk County taxpayers that we need as many, as much tax funds as we can get. So these four lots really represent half a million dollars over the next 20 years that I think is extremely valuable to Norfolk County.
Thank you.
Counselor Van Passan, then Columbus.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. This one had me confused because you're the owner, and you're here asking to leave it alone, you don't want it changed, right? That was my confusing. But the previous owner, when, like this, I remember being here when they first brought this one forward many years ago, and, but staff changed their mind in between in those seven years or eight years, whatever it's been. But I also have a question. There's more property on this parcel beyond the area that's left as a natural area. That's a woodlot right now. Is it possible that a bit more of that woodlot gets included as that naturalized area? Like, that's where the hill starts and goes down to the river, but...
It is likely that that could happen. I don't know if that land is gifted to Norfolk County, whether that can be designated as parkland. That would be something that the valley engineering would have to answer, but likely that land was going to be gifted to Norfolk County or to LPRCA.
Okay, thank you. And, well, I guess it's not a question. I can bring it up another point later. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Counselor Columbus.
Yes, Sam, if the four lots were put to residential use, where would the entrance be to the parkland?
That's a great question. So if you're on page two of the package, you'll see the blue highlighted pond area. And then I've denoted in pink a fence that would be required around the pond because it is quite deep. My recommendation with the yellow highlighted area is that a path be built around the pond. I feel that, living in the Yen subdivision for about eight years, the open space area really didn't get used often. But these paths around retention ponds, they seem to be walked on a daily basis by, you know, retirement community members. And there was a park, a playground area within the Yen subdivision that was heavily used. And I feel like the community would drive to St. Cecilia's to utilize that park rather than just utilize an open field where, you know, but there is going to still be an open field. That's the point I'm making, is that the orange highlighted area would still provide two acres of land for kids to kick balls or throw frisbees or whatever else. And it would be very clearly seen from the roads because where this pond will be built, it'll look like a huge massive field. And then the walking path would just lead you right to the open space.
Just to follow up, but where would the, where would people park? Say they wanted to go to that passive area or use the walking trail?
Yeah, great question.
Where would the people park their vehicle?
So in page one, I highlighted in yellow, there is 185 meters of potential road length in yellow where street parking could be provided, and there's roughly 30 car lengths available in that yellow highlighted area. And these are subdivision roads where three car widths, to my understanding, can be achieved.
I have a couple of questions. I just need to finish my note, sorry. On your package, and sorry, a community member was asking for us to put it up on the screen. We don't have it virtually at this time, but it can be shared later, so this is as close as we can get. But on the package you shared with us, Sam, you have four lots. On Norfolk County's map, they are three. Is that just an error, or?
Likely, they had it like seven years ago planned for three, so they may be larger width lots. With today's stresses on development and intensification, I'm asking for three, four 15-meter wide lots. We're seeing a lot of developments being 10 and 12 meters. So 15 meters is roughly 50 feet, which is considered an oversized lot in today's standards.
Okay, so is this the parcel in full that you own, or have you purchased more lands?
This is the parcel in full that Prominent Homes has purchased.
Okay. The reason why I ask that is it's just, it's difficult for us to make individual plans. It's nice to do block planning, so in this case, to say a park doesn't need to go here, but it will go in phase two of section three. So that's kind of where the struggle is right now for me.
Can I comment on that?
Please, yeah.
So there are two chunks of property to the east of this chunk of land, and those properties will have future development, and they will be closer to Cockshot Road. And my thoughts would be, the planning staff wanted to essentially provide a park to provide benefit to the surrounding community. Well, again, there won't be sidewalks from those communities to this development, but once those other developments are built to the east, then sidewalks will be built. So it does make more sense to put a piece of parkland closer to the corner of Dover Mills and Cockshot so that it can truly service the entire neighborhood and be in the center of the neighborhood.
Counselor Van Passan.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. This is my other point I was going to bring up. I like that thinking about the bigger picture myself, and if I had to pick out where I wanted to park, it would probably be on Dover Mills Road, on the property that's next door, so that it's central to the subdivisions on the other side of the Cockshits, the one south of Dover Mills. And can't we start thinking that way? And, you know, my idea would be to upsize the stormwater retention pond on this property so that the property to the east in future can hook onto this one. And the trade-off to that is that they got to provide a bit of extra parkland there later on, and let's start thinking that way in the big picture. I don't want to have two separate stormwater retention ponds on two individual properties and two little parks on two individual properties. Let's have one big pond on this property, one big park on the next property, and go from there. And I don't know how you go about doing that. That's up to our engineering department or planning department to figure that out, but I'm sure there's a way to put that plan in place and go at it from that perspective, at least.
Okay, yeah, some great comments. Let's do a final call for questions for Mr. Bunting and then see if anyone else wants to speak, and we can turn it back over to staff. Okay.
Could I even comment on the storm pond? So my understanding is that our storm pond, seven years ago, was sized, oversized to support some of the water, rainwater from surrounding properties. Since then, I believe development engineering is upgrading the calculations for calculating the size of stormwater ponds, and I believe it's updating this year. So it's going to change significantly, and basically all developments of this size will require a significant storm pond. Because of the demand of these very large rainfalls in the summertime, we're getting flash floods almost. Development engineering staff within Norfolk County is safeguarding Norfolk County to make sure that our stormwater ponds can handle the large amount of water very quickly.
And I'm sure all those things are true, so that would be all the more reason to, again, upsize this one, the outlet at least, so that if the development to the east comes, they can just extend this pond but still have the one main outlet, because I'm sure it's going to outlet downhill into the creek kind of area. So, you know, let's at least think about all those things. Again, I don't want to end up having two ponds within 100 feet of each other that serve the same purpose, right?
I see your point.
Okay. Thanks for coming, Sam. Mover and a seconder, please, to receive the deputation as information. Counselor Huffman moves, seconded by Counselor Van Adrishe. All in favor? That's carried. Is there anyone else here who wishes to speak today? Okay. Come on up to the podium, and there's a button on the right-hand side that will turn your microphone on. When you get up there, please state your name and your address for the public record, and you have five minutes on the clock.
Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor. My name's Don Malpass, and my wife, Viola. We live at Prospect Street. We're at 106 Prospect. We back onto the subject property, and we have several concerns, some of which have been touched on. But my first question is, where do the new residents of this community get out? How do they exit this community? Where is a road exit so they can drive out of this community? I don't see road access on this map except one very narrow access point at the bottom of the yellow area. So you have a lot of people with very little access out of that community. And I don't see, and they're going to be exiting onto a very busy thoroughfare. So that's a dilemma, and I think that one of the presenters has already talked about the dangerous walking in the area and talked about parking along the yellow area, I'm sorry, but I, the yellow area there, which is whatever street that is, it's just around my corner.
Dover Mills?
Dover Mills. So parking along Dover Mills is, as far as I'm concerned, a no-go. There's no room. It's a very narrow street. People park on it now, and it is, if you're going to have a subdivision of people who are essentially expected to park there sometimes, it just is not possible. If you go down from, so we're on Prospect, and if you go down the hill to the creek, it is one of the most dangerous stretches of roadway in or Dover. Not from going down, but it's from the people speeding up. They come up a blind hill around a steep curve at the top, and it's a very steep curve, and they're going very fast, and there's nowhere that you can put an exit along that part of the road. They will come to the intersection, and there, again, the traffic situation, I don't think, has been thought out adequately in what I've read or what I've heard so far. I think that if we go ahead, you go ahead with that, you need something of a traffic calming area or reduced speed along that area because it's just a dangerous part of the community now, and it's not going to get better if you put more parking and expect some parking to go on the street.
I'm just going to interrupt you for one minute, and I will, I'll let you reclaim your time. Just for your information, today's meeting, while your points are all received and we're listening, is really kind of focused on those three or four lots being used for parkland or used for residential housing. So if you had any comments on that specifically, that would be very helpful for us. Please continue.
Okay, well, just let me kind of review the things that I was thinking about, talking about. What's the, how many people are going to live in this community? Does anybody have an idea of what the density or the population is likely to be? Is that...
Yeah, we got to have conversations through the microphone, please, so if you could just...
So, yeah, it's, yeah, and that's if nobody has kids. So you end up with, you know, the density is going to be substantial in that area, and I just don't see any, oh, I can't talk about the planning, but I don't see any planning recognition of the fact that the density is going to be great. And, yeah, so the other things that I had to talk about are all related to the density, the traffic calming, the dangerous walking. You know, talking about parking at the school or taking the kids to the school park, St. Cecilia's School, is bizarre. It's not close. You're going to take a bunch of, you know, children from public school age, and it's a long walk down to the, down to the park. So I think, I think I'll leave, you have the gist of my concerns. They have to do with where do these people go? How do they park? How do they drive out? It just seems to me to be a community that doesn't, hasn't, the traffic flow and the complexity of moving people in even a small area like that has not been dealt with effectively. Thank you for your attention.
Okay, thank you very much for those comments. Appreciate it. Anyone else wish to join us? Please, yep, come on up. State your name and your address for the public record, and you have five minutes once you're ready to begin.
Five minutes after his statement?
Yes. Just use that microphone for us.
[inaudible].
I will, I'm really good at it. You go ahead.
Okay. I'll just preface this. I'm Dr. Steven Maltem, naturopathic doctor. I live at 88 Dover Mills Road. I live on the corner of that map that used to be up on the screen on the bottom right, or the bottom, I don't know, bottom, on the right part of the plane. So I came here to speak to other things, but I'm glad you went first. Thank you. I'm glad I talked to you, Sam. Thank you. Can I start my time now? Thank you. So my concern regarding the parkland is as such. The comments that St. Cecilia's useful parkland is baloney. The far, it's very, very far. It's at least like a 20-minute walk from the, from my house, so anyone living in that area is going to walk 15 to 20 minutes. So people don't typically, there's basically no parkland of use, if you're going to figure this out. There's no parkland of use anywhere, basically, from Main Street all the way through to the rest of Port Dover, heading that direction. Sunning Hill is a large open area that has parking around, which is really nice. No one ever uses it. My daughter used to be best friends with a kid there. I've been there many, many times. It just sits there unused. It's just a big field against... It's just a big field and it's wet and it has a lot of water retention. In terms of use of this park, for useful information for you to consider, is what you should be considering, in my opinion, from having listened to this, is an area for people to park that's actually is accessible, number one. Number two is, is there is sidewalked ability to walk all the way around it. There should be maybe a consideration of a sidewalk coming off of that dangerous corner he's talking about, Dover Mills. You're going to have the easement near Street B, so there's going to be an easement and eventually a house there. I talked to Sam, thank God. So there should be consideration of a sidewalk near where that easement is on Street B, then people can access it easily instead of having to walk all the way to Dover Mills. There should still be logical, if I was building this, it makes sense since there's basically no parkland anywhere near that's actually useful. The way he lived in the Yen subdivision where they put an actual park for children to play. If you're going to make a park, whether you're going to move it over, like you talked about, sir, removing it, you know, in different spots, you should consider something for children to use. And plus, I think some of that land was being excavated over a number of years for artifacts, et cetera. So I think it's logical to have either a parking area or at least an access with a walkway, not just a walkway around a big water thing with a big wall retention wand pond and then having to walk around. It'll be unused. You have to have it, think logically. If I was a person going there and there was a place to park and a place to access it walking and then something to use for children, it'd be great. There's absolutely nothing for children to use on that entire side of Port Dover. I've been foster parents for years. I've taken many children to many parks in Port Dover. I was just in a park the other day in Port Dover. There's nothing in that entire area of Port Dover. So I beseech you or I encourage you to consider that parkland, if you're going to keep it, which appears you're going to keep, have it accessible to people, actual things for children or people to use besides just a walkway. I get the walkway, it's good. I use the walkway that's up the street on the other side of Cockshod at periodic times. But I think you need to consider access to that for humans rather than just former houses and tax money. The tax money will come. You'll figure out a distance between the number of houses that are built here over time, amortization, blah, blah, blah. You'll figure out a way to get the half a million dollars over 20 years that he talks about, which is really only a small amount of money over 20 years. So I think you need to think of the accessibility of the entire half of Port Dover. Plus, you're going to expand. He showed me the plans, are going to expand to the left and to the right of that. So there's going to be way more people. There's going to be anywhere from 160 times forward, what's it, 720, 700, sorry, 40 houses, 640 houses? So 640 houses times two, that's over 1,000 people possibly using a park. It isn't that big a deal to throw in a parking spot in a walking area, maybe leave them a house or two and utilize one or two housing lots to have some kind of parking. The other thing is that I know from having been in this town and people complaining about people parking in front of their houses, I mean, people like to complain when they come see the doctors. So I don't think many of the people, even they're going to park on the side of the house, are going to like it. So I think it's, like a foresight would be to consider putting something there to park. Is the time over almost? They're talking behind me, so I can't tell.
Another minute and a half.
Good. I just have difficulty with people talking when I talk because I have a tinnitus. No, no, it's my issue, not yours. I just, I couldn't concentrate when they're talking because it starts ringing. Anyway, back to you. I think the parkland's important. I'm really happy that I met Sam because he told me that my business is going to be unobstructed because they're going to build the road literally to in front of my house so people will still be able to come the other way. But back to you. I think, I think it makes logical sense. If I was sitting in your chair, any of your chairs, some of you should be thinking about the fact, okay, the people that live there, the fact that this entire half of Port Dover has no accessible park for children, you should do something. Either do it now or do it like foresight, like you talked about a few minutes ago, in the next section of the park. Because to call a water retention area in a park where there's a bunch of grass and ticks is not really a park that's going to be used. Like kids don't use those things. They use it when there's playground area. Even if you put like a swing and a slide, you get more people there. I know I'm exaggerating a bit, but I'm trying to make the point so you actually think outside the box. I'm glad I didn't have, oh, and then the other thing you need to know about for that whole subdivision is that you're going to eventually, because you're going to go around it with all the hundreds of houses, you're going to have to have a parking light either at the top of, I know this is off the topic and it's going to be quick, you're going to have to really think about a parking light or something for the hundreds of cars that are going to be coming out of there in the future. Last time this was rejected partly, I think, because originally we were going to come out on Street B onto Prospect, which is what you talked about, but they're not doing according to him. But you need to think about a traffic light. I know that's another topic. I'll rescind my discussion now. Thank you.
Thank you.
What's the proper way to address you, Mayor?
Mayor is perfect.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you for coming.
I appreciate letting me talk.
Nope, thank you for your comments. Much appreciated. Mover and a second or please to receive both of those as information. Counselor Berry and Counselor Duthy, all in favor? That's carried. Thank you very mu, oh, shoot. Are you, did you want to speak, Eldon? That's why you're here. It's okay, we can do another motion.
I was just going to give context, but if that covered.
Okay, great. Perfect. Before we go any further, could I get some comments from staff on the procedure of this? I even need a refresher. Is the development application approved and final? Is there another public hearing on it? What can these folks expect? Is today, because today is just specifically about the parks.
Through the, to the mayor, through the chair, today's thing was just a public hearing for the red line revision and the possible rezoning of it. So this zoning by law amendment would be considered a minor zoning by law amendment. It would not have to come back to council. Bowden would have the signing authority of this, of the minor amendment to amend the lots from residential to open space.
Okay, thank you for that.
The other one was just for information about bringing this to the public, about the zoning.
Thank you. All right. Are there any questions from committee members with regards to anything we've heard here today? Counselor Van Passen, Columbus, and then Brunton.
Thanks, Mayor. See, this is where I'm still confused. We have Eldon here representing the previous owner for an application seven years ago, which I was actually here when they did that, just because it made no sense back then to not have thinking ahead and punching those extra roads east and west. But that was seven years ago. Staff have looked at it and want to make a couple of little tiny adjustments and change a couple of lot lines, which again is minor and we've delegated that authority to the Director of Planning. But we have a new owner who has a different vision of what he wants here. As a new owner, can he just sort of like withdraw that request to do that and start that process working with staff on the site plan? And can, is that how it works or is he locked into what was discussed seven years ago?
Question for Director of Planning.
Madam Chair, through you and to Counselor Van Passen. This is a statutory information session, so we are taking all this information in and we are seeing this for the first time as well as you are. So we have not had the chance to process any of this internally through other departments or anything like that. So we will take this back and give it full consideration, obviously, and report back. And I'm not sure if the proponent has anything to add to the process.
Sure, please, Eldon.
Thank you very much. So seven years ago, so a lot has happened in seven years. So one of the things, just for context for everybody, this went to the LPAT. So there was an appeal, it went to the LPAT, there was a decision made by the board, and so that's what we're dealing with today. So there was a bit of a red line process. There was this discussion about these lots in question. And yes, the owners have changed, right? So in terms of context, what was applied for was a recommendation by previous staff who are no longer with the county from the planning department. And so now with Mr. Bunting being the new owner, you know, we're, we have different ideas. So now we're happy to work with the departments to take a look at what this, this could mean considering the discussion here this evening. And yeah, we'd be happy to facilitate those discussions with the planning and engineering department. So that's just a short little context.
Okay, thank you for that. Counselor Columbus?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And the last deputation had mentioned several times about the need for playground equipment in that naturalized area. And I, I don't know if I missed it. Is there going to be playground, active playground equipment put into that, what we're calling I don't know if our staff has the answer or...
Yeah, we need to streamline this. What was the question? Is there a park equipment?
Is there any playground equipment going forward into the naturalized area?
Through the chair, they, we have not got into that detail yet. We haven't seen any of the, any of the plans yet. So as far as we know, it's just parkland. We don't know if it's an active park, passive park. We haven't got that far along in the process yet.
I see the applicants had their hand up.
Yeah, but we really need to streamline this process. So Eldon, if you can quickly provide us with a comment.
Okay, so there's, there's two components. Can we bring up the map again? Maybe visual would be helpful, one with the pink. Okay, very good. So the, oh, yep, there you go. So the lands behind the pink, that naturalized area, that area is actually hands off. There's nothing that can be built within that area. So I just wanted to make that clear. So there's no equipment, no structures, no nothing that can be put in that area. That is a protected area. Okay?
Would it be of interest for council members to ask questions to Eldon before we move back? I'd like to quit bouncing back and forth like this. So do you have any questions about the, the LPAT decision, the density, the roads, the traffic, the parking, the... Okay. Is it about the development or is it more of...
I'm not sure.
Okay, I'm going to go to Counselor Huffman first and I'll try to see where we can...
Thank you, thank you, Mayor Martin. Through you to Eldon. Why is it protected?
Archaeology. There's a study going on right now. It's not completed.
And how long will it take to be completed?
It looks like we're waiting for a ministry letter right now. So we're, hopefully soon, very soon, if the next month or so.
I guess I'm, I'm a little perplexed. So is it indigenous artifacts?
Correct.
Okay. So we just approved a park in Waterford on land almost exactly like this and we're putting in a play structure. So I don't understand why you wouldn't be able to put in a play structure.
That's a good question. I don't have an answer for that.
Okay. If you could please get an answer for that, that would be great. Thanks.
I have Counselor Brunton, Duthy, and then Michelle Lee. But please just start with questions for Eldon and then we'll excuse him, receive it as information and go back to staff.
Martin, I'm, I think mine are more related to staff.
Give it a go and I will correct you if not.
Okay, mine is to deal with the stormwater plans for this whole subdivision. And as you know, we have had great concerns with the future cost of cleaning stormwater ponds. And this is a prime example where the ponds are required for, what is it, X number of lots? 100 lots, we'll say? I'm not sure how many are there.
160.
160.
160, wow, that's even better. So what I would like to see and registered on title, that these individual lots, when the time comes to clean the pond, that they are required individually to pay their share. And that's very easily done if it's registered on title. It's no different than a grading plan, which for every lot will be registered on title. And we seem to be stuck with the cleaning of all these that have occurred over the last 20 years, I'll say. And if we look after the cat's basins that are cleaned and so forth, it shouldn't be a big issue every 10 years to clean this stormwater pond, if that's what it takes. And again, I think staff should look at that. So the individual lots are required to pay for it. And I'll say that because in the country, we have municipal drains and we all contribute to pay for those drains. So it's no different, this pond is required for that subdivision. Anyways, I hope staff look into that.
Okay, again, questions for Eldon, Counselor Duthy? Do you have any?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My question is for staff.
Thank you, I'll come back to you. And then Counselor Michelle Lee.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Through you to Eldon. Eldon, you know that there are four stages to the archaeological study. Are you aware of what stage this one is at?
There's been a mix. As far as I know, this is stage three. There has been stage four excavation and cleared, which is why the lots that you see closest to that area are able to be developed.
Okay, thank you, because that was my question. Typically, if it's at stage two, nobody's moving. Okay, thank you.
Just for my own clarity, the orange area in full is the archaeological site or the blue area that is outlined? Is that, is that wetlands or is that the arche, sorry, on Sam's map that he presented us with?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's the orange area that he highlighted.
In full is the archaeological site?
Correct.
Okay, thanks. All right. Well, I have you here, Eldon, just for clarity from some of our comments from our deputation. Are you, do you know off the top of your head, are you able to touch on the density? Can you confirm that there is a second entrance there?
Yeah, I don't recall the density. It was, it's been a while. It was approved by the board. But there is emergency access. So you see where, I think it's Prospect Street, that it, there's a, I can't see it.
Down at the bottom there?
Yes, by the blue area.
There's a little green line.
So that, that there, there's a connecting sidewalk and then there is a lot, it's a block actually on the plan. That block is, with this approval, is in emergency access. It's not accessible to the public, only for emergencies. When development occurs on either east or west of this subdivision, there'll be additional accesses provided, which means I have continuity between the subdivisions. That access will no longer be required. It will become a lot.
Okay, thank you for those comments. All right, let's get a mover and a second or to receive the comments and information from Eldon as information. Counselor Van Passen, Counselor Michelle Lee, all in favor? And now I'm going to go back to Counselor Duthy for questions of staff.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Through you, it's actually just a clarifying question. I am trying to, and with respect to staff, I'm trying to understand why we're here. Staff haven't reviewed this fully. It went to LPAT seven years ago. There's no legislative timelines. There's a new owner on the property. We haven't met with him to discuss their plans. Why are we here? If you can just please help me to understand. I don't say that flippantly.
Through the chair to Counselor Duthy, this is a statutory public meeting. We are required to, because of the proposed zoning by law amendment, we have to bring it to a public hearing. So one of the, one of the reasons we are, they would like to rezone the three lots on this map, the four lots, so part of the process of rezoning is a public hearing.
Who, okay. Who's trying to rezone it?
The applicant.
But it... You're going to have to help me here. Because the applicant is, doesn't own the property any longer. Through your worship, yeah, this is an unusual situation. Again, we just received this information today, just before this, we walked into this meeting today. So we have to take it into consideration as part of this meeting. That's the purpose of this meeting. And we will have to sit down with the new owner to discuss the next steps that they would like to take.
So for clarity, just for, I'll jump in, I'll come back to you. The application that you prepared was that there were three lots approved, housing lots in the LPAT decision that would be changed to open space. And furthermore, that you were going to put a holding provision on that. What you, what we are hearing from Mr. Bunting, which is new information for you today, is that those three lots would actually like to be four and don't turn them to open space, don't put a holding on them, let's build with R1B. So they were going to change three lots into park space and Mr. Bunting has now brought forward this proposal. So that's the confusion.
Thanks. I understand, I just think it's slightly backwards. I understand there's a statutory timeline.
Okay. Any other questions for staff at this point? Go ahead.
I guess you got me confused somewhat too today. Where does this whole thing sit now timewise? Is there a timeframe for this to come back or how does... Sorry?
Through your chair, you mean to have a decision on this?
Yes.
On this matter? Is there a timeline? I don't believe so. No?
No timeline. What about the entire subdivision?
Well, the subdivision's already gone through the process, so it's no longer, there's no timelines associated with that.
Well, yeah, but I guess, and I believe I saw this once before, but now we have a bigger stormwater pond and there's other issues here, like, so you're going to deal with all that, am I correct?
That's right.
And bring it back to us. But there's no timeline.
There's no timeline at the moment, no.
And the other question I would have then is, where does our allocation of water and wastewater kick in here? When does that happen?
I believe we have the Director of Engineering online, and he could probably...
I'm actually going to cut that off, and we can have that conversation. Staff are working on an internal allocation policy, and this will be one of those developments that was ready and waiting.
We don't have that yet.
We, unless you're prepared to comment on that, we're not, I'm going to stop that today.
Okay.
But could I just seek clarification on something Council Brunton said? He just said that you're going to change, so his example is stormwater retention pond, and then you're going to bring it back to us. And I believe you nodded yes. But just a moment before that, you said it was a minor zoning amendment and wouldn't be coming back to us.
Sorry. Through you, your chair, this particular proposal that we were discussing here today was en route for, for an approval, delegated approval. Now, we're going to have to look at this a little differently now, and consult perhaps get legal advice on how to proceed.
Okay, so today, I'm going to ask committee to provide you with their comments on the preferred direction. It is a statutory public meeting, so no direction will be given. If there's consensus here amongst council members, I'd prefer to not get a legal opinion and move this forward, my two cents. So are there any comments from council members with regards to what's before you today? Using this for residential, or using this for park space, or looking at a bigger block plan, as per Councilor Van Passen's comments? Please leave your commentary with staff, so they have some direction. Councilor Van Andrishee.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and through you. So here we are today, just looking at these lots, whether they can be, rather than restricted land there for a parkway, but you're telling me, though, that in the parkland that's above it, in the orange, could be used for parkland. You're waiting for a ministry letter, correct? So all we're looking at is, do we let those lots come into play or not? If, if the parkland up here is available to use for parkland, I'm fine with making sure that we have more lots. Okay? Because we're under stress. This development has already been approved, so we're just looking at that particular little block and saying, instead of it being a block of open space, it would be turned into, and they're require, they're requesting four lots, correct? So I'm okay with that.
Thanks for those comments. Councilor Van Passen?
Yes, thanks, Madam Mayor. I think over the last term of council, and this one, we've been shying away from past history of every developer gives, they are required, is it four percent or something of the land they give us as parkland, which is usually the useless corner you can't do anything with. And we end up with these tiny little parquetts all over the place, that it's lucky if they even get the grass cut once in a while, because that takes time and money. And we made that shift, rather than doing that, we'll take the cash in lieu of parkland, which is a good chunk of change, because it's based on the price of these lots, and use that money to put actual amenities on the existing parks that we have, or, you know, as I suggested before, take the cash from this one and develop a bigger park when the next developer goes on, take the land from him, use this money to put the amenities on it, and we'd have one nice park that everybody can share. So again, I don't support changing this little corner into another piece of grass that we won't have the money to put any equipment on, and it's, you know, the farthest edge of Port Dover. I'd rather have it on, on a different street, accessible to more people, and with better amenities on it. So, you know, I can sort of agree with the new owner, that let them build houses here. There'll be a green space area, you know, whether you call it a park or a green space, that'll still be there, that you could walk around. The new owners offered to, or suggested that it's possible to put a walking path around the stormwater retention pond. That's a good idea, you know, those kind of things. But hopefully, staff will take that. You know, this subdivision is already approved, and now we want to undo a little part of it. That just makes no sense to me. So let's stick with what we, the OLT agreed with, and forget about these changes, and staff can bring back a final report, even if it's just a memo to say we didn't do anything.
Councilor Duthy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you, my opinion would be the same. I think the application that previously came forward, that eventually went to LPAT, would have included those as lots previously, which is what was presented as part of the plan of subdivision. So I would say leave them and build them.
Any other comments? Councilor Berry?
Thanks, Mayor. Just, excuse me, nothing super different, but I also wanted to mention that I'm fine with going from three to four, also that, you know, let's go.
Okay, my comments would be, yeah, I'm more interested in staff, whenever possible, having a holistic view and working on the block planning. And I would agree that putting a park down in the bottom corner, that's maybe not the best location for future families and homes to get to, something more centralized might be a better idea. Same goes for stormwater retention, whenever possible. So with that, I believe Mr. Bunting's looking for four units, and I would be of the mind to give him the four units, because I'd like for him to make a payment for, in lieu for parkland, for a future park, when another developer is ready to build up land. It's not just their problem. Prominent Homes has made their contribution as well. And I also would be more inclined to give him four, because that entire street is going to need a sidewalk on it. And that should not be paid for by Norfolk County taxpayers, that should be paid for by the development community. Mr. Bunting on Prospect Street has, there is a sidewalk, and it would come up and connect. There wouldn't be much requirement to add very much sidewalk there, but that is something that staff need to be taking into consideration now and in future developments in that area.